Okay, it's 1:30. Four county commissioners holding ready to meet on October 19th, 2021. County Commissioners Alashoff, Ronnie Mays, and Warren Brown. Interim County Administrator and County Attorney Todd Weaver. Deputy County Clerk and Recorder Tom Bliss present. Hold the meeting to 1:30.
Recording in progress.
Prepare everybody, all silence their cell phones. Sharpen the blades of allegiance. All loud and clear in the silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any disclosures of public interest?
No, sign in.
Group of or adjustments to your agenda? And not having any?
Mr. Chair, who is the first to be presented?
Second.
The motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now thank the public comments. Stuff we have to do. Now calling you to the post your podium, sign in, state your name and address for the record, please. We'll move in in three minutes. Jimmy Jones.
So you don't need to sign any?
Oh, because I already did this. But that's, I told you. I was just trying to find. Yep, I know I'm a little late on this, I couldn't make my last meeting, but I did want to comment. First of all, I heard that the county attorney is now the assessor for the county.
He's a temporary interim administrator.
Oh, he's not the assessor?
No.
Well, then there's no conflict of interest there. There we go. I heard wrong, sorry. Also, about the COVID funds. I just, over the last eighteen months or so, as the people had their rights violated, lost work, lost revenue, had to shut down their businesses, all based on unconstitutional orders and mandates. I just find it a little disbelieving that county employees who continue to get paid that whole time get a bonus when none of our county employees or government stood up for the way the people. So I, you know, I know you guys have already done the fines, but I just wanted you to know that I just think that's unacceptable. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Bill Hudson.
Thank you. Bill Hudson for Porsha's Leno Street. Would really like to thank you for the discussion this morning about RV. People living in RVs, I thought that was a really healthy discussion to start off that procedure. Also, thank, want to thank the commissioners for agreeing to meet with me, representing Pogosa Housing Partners, to discuss our housing problems that we're having. Just found out that the ski area is having a really hard time hiring people this year. That's another business that's struggling, it sounds like. So what I just presented you with are two draft ballot measures that might be discussed by the town council on Thursday. If you're interested in these, you might want to go to that meeting on Thursday. They're going to be discussing what's going to go on the ballot in April. And these are being brought forward by Pogosa Housing Partners as suggestions for what they might want to put on the ballot to let the voters decide.
As of last three days.
That was the next one.
And Pogosa Housing Partners would really like to work with the commissioners and with the town council. If there's a compromise that we can come to, that everybody can support to some degree, that would be better for us. We have a team ready to go door to door and to put this on the ballot if the town council refuses to do it or is not interested. We are intent on getting this on the ballot in April, but we'd rather have everybody's support for it rather than just the citizens. We've spent millions of dollars supporting the tourism industry for the past decade. I figure at about $10 million. I think we need to spend at least that much over the next ten years on this problem, which is housing. And to make that happen, I think we need a funding stream. And these are two possible funding streams that the town and the county could work on. If you'll notice, we have included in the ordinance a stipulation that if the county decides to do an excise tax, the town council can repeal their excise tax. However, the town council can't repeal it if the voters approve it. It's permanent for two years if we have to go to the voters. So we'd rather have the town council put it on the ballot so that then they can adjust it whenever you decide to make a funding stream available to the community. So if you wanted to talk with the town council about that, we'd much rather have them have the flexibility. They won't have it if we have to go to the voters directly. And the last page on the excise tax shows you the bedrooms that came out of the planning departments at both town and county. And so you can calculate for yourselves how much revenue would come from that excise tax that's based on the number of bedrooms. And we look forward to mitigating the problems that our workforce is having and hope we can work with the DOCC in getting that done. Thank you so much.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a comment. On that, if you petition to the town, that ballot only goes to the town.
It's only the town voters.
And not within the county?
It doesn't affect the county?
Okay. I would, I would like to see a better long-term solution than these two. I don't think that these two are effective, you and I had a discussion about that. But I think there needs to be probably further insight about this other than just immediately rushing it to a ballot measure to where the voters make a decision on something that's not a permanent solution, but a temporary fix. That's my opinion.
Well, we can discuss it some more if you'd like to meet again.
Well, you've heard what I had to say.
Okay.
All right. Further public comments? We have a proclamation. Ashley Wilson? Back there.
So my name is Ashley Wilson. I work with Rise Above Violence, we're the local domestic violence and sexual assault agency that serves Archuleta County. Thank you for letting me come today. As most years, we come in October because October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And so we really appreciate the board county commissioners for offering this proclamation with us. It's really important because as we've seen in the last year, numbers continue to rise. It's not something that is going away. And as our community grows, so do the social issues that come along with having more people here. And so as our agency is committed to, you know, being available to the victims in this community, we also find it very important that the public is aware of those types of things. And so that's why we bring the proclamation today, so that we can all work together to find a solution and then end to this because we believe it can end, at least in Pogosa, if we're all committed as a community to come together. And so I will read the proclamation. Proclaiming October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Archuleta County. In Archuleta County, in recognition of the important work done by survivors, domestic violence programs, and victim service providers, I urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs sponsored by Rise Above Violence and work towards the elimination of intimate partner violence. Whereas last year in 2020, Rise Above Violence served 400 victims in our community. Whereas on average, nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States, during one year, this equates to more than 10 million women and men. Whereas the impact of domestic violence is felt not only by individuals and families, but communities and the nation as a whole. Whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at higher than normal rates and higher than the national average. And whereas domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, but it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems, each who can do one thing that adds a valuable and powerful component to transforming our communities. Therefore, we, the county commissioners of Archuleta County, proclaim the month of October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Archuleta County, Colorado. We wish for all of our citizens and visitors to know there is always help available through Rise Above Violence, and we will show our support throughout this month and the entire year.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hunter Robinson?
I do. Actually, I'd like to thank you and the whole team for leaning on this and continued work on it. Also, as a reminder to everybody else too, physical violence isn't just violence. There's also mental violence, mental abuse. And if you know of anybody or anyone that is experiencing such issues, I strongly express to reach out to the people that you know, Department of Health and Human Services, and they'll get you the help they need. And thank you, Ashley.
I would like to just offer a brief thank you. I appreciate it, and I know exactly what you and your office goes through, working with you for many years. I know that you provided invaluable service to our community, not only to the victims, but also through education and turning around some of the would-be or past offenders of this. So I appreciate all of the aspects that you bring in making our community a better place to live.
I would just have to echo Commissioner Brown having worked with y'all. Really, really appreciate what you do, it's not easy. But from our side, and I know from the victims as well, it's very appreciated. Thank you. Okay, entertain the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt proclamation declaring the month of October Domestic Violence Prevention Month in Archuleta County as read.
Second. The motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good afternoon, commissioners. For your consent agenda this afternoon, we have the payable warrants, which I just called from October 6th to October 19th, 2021. Excuse me. We have the regular meeting minutes from October 5th, 2021. Special meeting minutes from October 12th, 2021. And in consideration of Resolution 2021-84, consolidate two lots into one lot in Twin Creek Village owned by Sarah and Matthew McLean. And in consideration of Resolution 2021-85, consolidate three lots into one lot in Twin Creek Village owned by Dow B. and Barbara J. Vidic. And in consideration of Resolution 2021-86, consolidate two lots into one lot in Pogosa Vista owned by Bradley and Robin McCulloughs. And in consideration of Resolution, a consideration of corrected Resolution 2021-87, to consolidate two lots into one lot in Pogosa Highlands Estates owned by Shane or Bertha, let's guess, and Sean Mills. And that concludes your consent agenda, recommend approval for the other.
entertain the motion.
Yes, sir. I move to approve the consent agenda is presented.
Second.
The motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We do business. Consideration approval of intergovernmental agreement with Hinsdale County for jail services. Sheriff's Office. Are you, you gonna represent sheriff today?
Yes, sir.
How you doing, there?
Good, Commissioner, how you doing, sir?
You can go ahead and state your next move.
Everyone, what is?
And that is?
I am, I'm, I'm, sir.
Rather than making a reading, is there any sensitive changes of our last agreement that you know?
Uh, no, sir, just simply in case, you know, in case someone's wrestling on this side of the mountain that Hinsdale County allows them to bring them to our jail, then we get compensated at the same rate the city compensates us.
Okay.
And has that been adjusted for this year, or is this just a continuation?
Uh, I believe, um, this is a new agreement. I'm not actually sure we had an agreement in place that was still in effect.
I don't remember one to my knowledge, so.
Okay.
That looks like $65.
Sorry.
$65 per day?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Um, has this been presented to Hinsdale commissioners?
Yes, sir, there's been, um, they've sent it back several times with changes, and we've approved the changes. And the finished work is what is in front of you between the two counties.
Excellent. Actually, I mean, not these, actually finished one. There were a few, at least the one that was uploaded, I'm not sure if the most recent version was. There's some very minor, there weren't substantive changes to it. There was a couple corrections here and there, they came back from the Hinsdale County Administrator. And so that's what we'll be solidifying. But it's not significantly different than what's in front of me.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the, um, I'm sorry. My page length and dollar short.
That's all right.
That's okay.
The second page is helpful, should be.
Is that correct?
No.
So, you got two first pages.
You did get three pages, here's the trailer.
You were a page short.
You wasn't, you were a page short, not a dollar short.
Thank you for the insight. Mr. Chair, now that I have it in front of me, I move to adopt the intergovernmental agreement with Hinsdale County for jail services as presented.
My second.
The motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Item B. Consideration approval of furniture bid for DHS office. That's, hey, there you are.
It's not good on the record. You gotta see him, he'll be on time.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Matt Hudson, Human Services Director. In regards to agenda item number C, the county posted a RFP in order to acquire the furniture and equipment needs for the new DHS site. The county staff met to review the proposals, there were three proposals. We did apples-to-apples comparisons between those proposals as far as quality, longevity on the equipment that was needed to ensure that we would have that equipment and office furnishing for a long time. And it was the committee's recommendation to make that award, or recommend that you make that award to Parkers.
You guys have questions?
On this pool, Maggie 2000, uh, is that solely on Archuleta County too, or?
The, um, the allocation, um, each of our programs gets reimbursed anywhere from 8% to 20%. I mean, the 8% or 20% would be the county match on a full, let's say, $100,000. And so when we run this, your allocation formulas for very specific programs, we get reimbursed at those rates. And so the actual cost to the county, I'm not a mathematician, but it's around $20,000. It's up there to a full $100,000. And we did budget for those costs in the current year's fiscal budget that's been approved. And the finance director and I, as well as the intergovernmental administrator, have also met to discuss what happens contingency plan lies, should the furniture not be delivered before the end of the year? And we have to, depending on which year, 22, kind of this way.
Yeah, and the only reason I ask that is I know there's public here, so they also need to know the exact information on that too.
Absolutely.
And this does fall within your current budget, as far as dollar amount, correct? Oh, okay, thank you.
Anything for the chair, you might want to make a question?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the bid from Parker's Workplace Solutions for Furniture for the new DHS office in the amount not to exceed $92,538.20 as presented.
My second.
Is the motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Item C. Consideration of letter of support for home funds application for HDG funds.
Yeah, so for you, for your consideration and approval, is a letter of support for homes fund. They provide mortgage assistance to residents of Archuleta County. And they are applying for housing development grant funds or HDG funds on the Colorado Division of Housing. And these funds will be used to help households with income between 8% and 100% of the average median income in Archuleta County. And so this letter of support basically is a letter supporting their application to the Colorado Department of Housing, Division of Housing.
Any questions?
No, sir, I think it was covered on last week's work session, so thank you.
I entertain the motion.
Now, Mr. Chair, I move to sign a letter of support for Department of Local Affairs for Homes Funds Application. HDG funds is presented, second.
The motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item D. Consideration approval of airport five-year engineering contract. Chris Worrice.
This is for airport five-year engineering contract. It was up in June, I believe. And we did an RFQ for the airport engineering. We had three different engineering firms apply. Between the county and the airport and finance, we've gone through, and we've selected J Aviation once again for another five-year contract.
Any questions?
I have one, thank you.
I just have, not, not a question about the contract. Just a question to Chris. I mean, Chris, would our airport ever be eligible for, like, say, flights, smaller flights from, smaller commercial flights from Durango to here?
No, no, sir, that was brought up. Either the end of last year or the beginning of this year. We talked with J Aviation and the FAA. The vicinity that we're in, we have Cortez, Durango, over the pass, Alamosa. We just don't have.
What it takes.
What it takes. We're not big enough of a town, the population. All of those guys that do the little flights, they just wouldn't come here. You have to fill the flight, and we don't have the population to be back.
All right. Nothing else, Mr. Chair? All right, I entertain the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the airport engineering contract with J Aviation Inc. as presented. My second.
Is the motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Chris.
Excuse me, consideration, I mean, consideration approval of, remember, I'm understanding Colorado Attorney General.
So this is, well, actually, a number of documents for you, all involved in the opioid settlement. And this is a settlement with the big three opioid distributors, which are Kesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen, along with the opioid manufacturer Johnson &amp; Johnson. And this not involve, you know, Purdue Pharma is another big one out there. And that's not included in the settlement. That's a whole other litigation still ongoing. Anyway, so the MOU, which is the main document, basically establishes a framework for distributing and sharing these settlement proceeds throughout Colorado, local governments and CCI, and a couple other agencies. CML is involved as well in negotiating with Attorney General to get this MOU in place. So that is what this MOU does. It helps if, just go a little farther about the settlements. So the funds nationwide, the big three distributors will pay a maximum of $21 billion over 18 years. Johnson &amp; Johnson will pay a maximum of $5 billion over nine years. So that totals up to about $22.8 billion in settlement proceeds. And that will go, again, nationwide. It appears Colorado's max share from these funds would be likely to be around $300 million, plus or minus, depending on whatever circumstances. And so what really behooves to get the settlement done is a high participation from local governments. So they're seeking a 95% participation. And if the participation isn't high enough, the settling entities, the big three and Johnson &amp; Johnson, can actually walk away from the settlement. So they're very much encouraging, and there's incentives to participate, like, potentially 20 to 30%. And funding could come to the state if 95% local government sign on. So that's pretty much what this does. The MOU itself sets forth how the money would be distributed. And that is 10%, directly goes to the state. 20%, it goes to participating local governments. 60% goes to the different regions that have been set up within the state. And then 10% goes to specific abatement infrastructure projects. And those are all kind of spelled out in the MOU itself, which is kind of a detailed document. So as for the region, we're in Region 17. That's Dolores, San Juan, Manazuma, Aploada, and Archuleta. And so Regional Awards will be set up, a regional council is actually, is what it's really called. And they'll involve individuals from all local governments involved, from, I believe, law enforcement. It just set forth an MOU, which is also being drafted right now and come forward later. So that is really what the MOU does. It takes, basically, here's how the money's being distributed, and it has a list of approvals, approved uses for those funds. And so that's the first one, the Colorado opioid MOU. The ESCO agreement basically sets forth that the money would be distributed to the ESCO agent, and then once the participation hits the key level, what I think is 95%, then that money will be released from the ESCO agent to local governments and the regions and to the state. The settlement participation forms are basically local government signing on to participate in the settlement. And so it's basically a waiver and release form saying, hey, this is what's agreed to settle this issue, so we're not going to be governing also. And so those are the main documents to be signed. And then there's just an FAQ and a summary. That's also included in your agenda items. So recommend approval of this, of signing the opioid MOU along with the ESCO agreement and participation, participation forms. As I mentioned this morning in the work session, if we sign on, we get the funds. If we don't sign on, likely we'll get zero. So to me, it's pretty straightforward that this is something we should participate in. We could get, I don't know how much money we'd get. It could be up to $100,000, it could be less, somewhere in between. But a good amount of money that we can use for levels of treatment of opioid and those that have been impacted by opioid addiction.
That's the most important part there, is this money's going to be used to help people with opioid addictions. And also give them the area or outdoor place that they can go to get the help.
Right, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of approved uses, a lot of it is geared towards treatment. There's some that is geared towards those who, like women who may be pregnant, have the addiction, to help them work through those issues. You know, you can go to law enforcement, it can go to those incarcerated who need maybe treatment. So it's really geared towards treatment and building programs to address the addiction of opioids.
Just, just for your information, so through the Community Development Corporation, where I sit on the board, this discussion has come up with Region 9. It sounds as though the monies would not actually come to Archuleta County, but to our region. And from that region, they would go towards the treatment or providing the services outlined. And we would cooperatively, as a region, we would get more services in a more centrally-located place. So it could serve, so possibly, it may be in Durango or Aploada County, so it would be about in the middle. So we could serve, so possibly, it may be in Durango or Aploada County, so it would be about in the middle. And so to provide those services to folks that are, uh, are not incarcerated, that's, that's kind of what it would look like.
Yeah, I mean, it is, so, yeah, the bulk of the money goes to the regional councils. But twenty percent would go to participating local governments directly to the county and that would be allocated. The split is like about ninety percent of the county and about ten percent of the town. So that's, that's what it's shown, um, in the exhibits, lets, it sets that all forward. So.
Really?
Yeah, so the bulk, the bulk will join regional councils to set up regional programs because opioid addiction doesn't know jurisdiction laws. And so that's how they're trying to really address it is set up regional centers to, for, for treatment. Um, and that's probably the most effective use of, of, of the money.
To benefit regionally and locally?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Name third?
Yes, sir.
I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the opioid settlement memorandum of understanding with the Attorney General's decision.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Questions, I call it?
Just one. Uh, the shade screen for the park out there in Aspen Springs?
Yes.
Uh, that is gonna be delayed. It's, we have it, but it's not in our possession. It's in the Playtime people's possession, but they both agree with the Metro District that it would be better to be installed in the spring than right now before winter. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. I got the email. I sent it to Todd and Mary for letter of documentation, so we have it. That's it.
Do I have to give you one more time? Oh, yes.
On Saturday.
Oh, the course over.
Yeah, there we go, yeah.
Where we call it, Justice Facility?
Yeah, the course over, like, sir, law.
We'll be at eleven o'clock about as ten, like we said earlier this morning, so.
Yeah, I made that mistake this morning and it was not ten o'clock. It's eleven o'clock. So that ceremony will be held at eleven o'clock. And, uh, anybody wishing to attend, more than welcome to come to ten. It'll be at the Department of Justice Facility area.
Nothing else?
No, sir.
Thank you. If nothing else, I'll be ready in two oh two.